...2:00 PM on this Tuesday, November 10th, 2015. And I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. Actually, the first meeting will be a meeting of zoning board adjustment. And as I said, the time is 6:32. If you need to, I'll give an invitation. And Plaques is up. Lord God, humbly we acknowledge that, as your son told us, only you are good. And so, without your guidance, Lord, we know that we will fail you. Lord, lead us in these proceedings, so that together, we do what is right. In the name of Christ our Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
First item, item number four is a public hearing. And it is, item four says, "Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, County Grayson, State of Texas, being described as Division Van Alstine, Block 3, 75 by 300 feet of SB 8, more commonly known as 293 West Van Alstine Parkway, for a variance to comprehensive zoning regulations section 18B dot 4, Highden Area Regulations, Appendix 1 dash B, setback in coverage regulations." The owner/agent is requesting variance to reduce the percent of masonry required for the property, which is currently zoned, Single Family Residential District 1, SF1. And I will tell you that later, in the city council meeting, there is an item to change that zone. Actually, I believe SF1 requires no masonry. Is that correct?
SF1 is no longer an appropriate zoning class, Mayor. So that's, what you're looking at, what you're talking about is the Old Town District. Okay, the Old Town District, the masonry requirements is not.
During the meeting, during the regular session, we're going to, they are requesting to change that from SF1 to the zoning of C1, Commercial District, Office Light Detail and Neighborhood Services. And I believe the appendix that I have shows that to be, shows there to be a 60% masonry requirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. But first, we'll attend to the public hearing on that request. Is there, does anyone wish to speak on that? Any comments? From the council, are there any comments or questions?
You'll need to have a consideration, sir. The public hearing will just be if anybody from the crowd has anything to say.
All right. Thank you. And so, a second call for any comments or questions regarding that item, 293 West Van Alstine Parkway. Third and final call for any questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to items for consideration, which is pretty much the same item. But here, we consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, County Grayson, State of Texas, being described as Divisions Van Alstine, Block 3, 75 by 300 feet of SB 8, more commonly known as 293 West Van Alstine Parkway, for a variance in comprehensive zoning regulations section 18B dot 4, Highden Area Regulations, Appendix 1 dash B, setback in coverage regulations. The owner/agent is requesting variance to reduce the percent of masonry required for the property, which is currently zoned, Single Family Residential District, or SF1. Any comments or questions from the council? Is there anybody here representing the property with a next question?
Councilman Plaques, Mayor. Ty Chapman is here from Bureau Veritas, our code agency for building code issues. And he had spoken with the property owner, not property owner, but the contractor, Tony Miller, regarding this variance that he requested. And he said he wasn't going to be here, but Ty can help articulate what exactly is at stake in this instance.
My first question is, the wood that is above the stone, I mean, the brick or stone or whatever it is that's up there now, is the wood above the hardy plank?
Yes, sir.
It is?
Yes.
And how did it happen to get through?
Well, as bad as I hate to do it, I had to stand up here and tell you it was a mistake on our part. Or once Jennifer and the staff, you know, contacted me about it, there was a misunderstanding on our part with the zoning, with the assumption that it was in the Old Town District where there were no masonry requirements, which only applies to residential, you know. Our office basically messed up, dropped the ball. I'm sorry to say that, but they approved the plans with the assumption that it was in the Old Town District where the masonry didn't apply. And of course, with us not doing the foundation inspections, you know, there was a brick ledge out there, you know, until I got out there and actually done the inspection and realized there was a problem. And, you know, Jennifer brought it to my attention that, you know, it didn't meet the requirements. You know, we messed up, and as bad as I hate to say it, we're aware of it, and, you know, we're not going to let it happen again. But it was a hiccup on our part, due to the fact of where it was located. And, you know, I've talked to Tony about it, and, you know, so.
So, the amount of brick they did put on initially, is it brick or stones?
It's stone.
Okay. The amount of stone they put on initially was 30?
About roughly 35%. Basically, what they done, they came up and put a stone, and put a row lock on it, and the rest of it come up as siding. And then, when it came to everybody's attention, that's where we stopped.
Okay. And did they have to put it on it, or that was just a choice they made to put it on?
No, it, that, what is on there now is what was showing on the plans. It just wasn't enough.
But it wasn't required, nobody measured how much they were doing, because they didn't really know that anything was, yeah, okay, on a, since you thought it was a Old Town, there isn't any stone required in Old Town. So therefore, if you-
Only on residential.
Okay.
On commercial, there is.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you know, basically, you know, like I say, as bad as I hate to stand up here and tell you, we dropped the ball, and, you know, we messed up on that.
Look, it's currently zoned Single Family 1 right now.
Right.
So, would it not be considered as Old Town as it's being built right now? And until that gets re-zoned, I mean, explain to me how you dropped the ball if they are building on a current zoning of Single Family?
Well, my understanding, and y'all feel free to chime in.
I'm sorry to interrupt. It is zoned SF1, because it was labeled for the children's home health care. Without specifically looking for the address, it was assumed that they were renovating the existing office, which is right next door, and is zoned C1. So, the permit went to Bureau Veritas for them to review labeled C1. And then, when this masonry issue came about, realized that the property that they're building on is not C1, it is SF1. So, we had to ask them to move forward and request a zone change, as well as the variance.
And there is a zone change in your regular background?
And like before, I'm wondering how this is really their fault? Well, and maybe it's just because I don't know exactly the steps, but it seems to me that the appearance of that building has never been that of a residence. It's always looked like something that was going to be some sort of office. And would it have been more proper if they had asked for C1 in the beginning, since it was, it looks like it was always intended to be an office?
Well, I mean, to be honest with you, as far as the zoning goes, you know, I'm not for sure what the original zoning was, or what they were anticipating. You know, once we got the plans, you know, my office contacted me and said, you know, hey, we've got this project going in, you know, it appears to be in the Old Town donation. They told me where it was, and I said, well, you know, yes, I believe it is. You know, I wasn't aware of any current zoning or zoning changes in the process. So, you know, I told them to go ahead and proceed with, you know, what they were looking at, and unfortunately, it didn't work out, you know, like I thought it would.
Well, I know you can't read anyone's mind, but I'm just wondering why they, in the beginning, they called it a residential project when they knew it was going to be commercial?
Well, and I don't, I don't know that they actually called it a residential project. I think all along, I mean, you know, from my company's standpoint, you know, they see children's home health care, that's not going to be residential. They, you know, I think what they did, you know, was they utilized the Google Earth, and they looked at the area, and they said, you know, okay, we've got all these houses around here. I don't think they realized that, you know, even though it has the appearance of a residential project, that it was going to be utilized for commercial. Even though, you know, like I told them, with, you know, children's home health care, and I explained to them what, you know, it's going to be used for a building office, that, you know, at the least, you know, they should have contacted me, or contacted Frank, or Jennifer, and said, you know, hey, you know, hey, we got this, and, you know, here's what we got. So that's why I'm going to stand up here and take the blame for the situation, because I don't think, on our behalf, we asked enough questions to figure out what it was. Even though it had the appearance and the location of a residential situation, you know, it should have been known that it wasn't.
Appreciate you coming in.
And I apologize for the problems.
I don't know if it's any apologizing. I appreciate you being here.
I have a question, and it doesn't have to do with fault of mistake or whatever. This is going to be a commercial property. A wood that says 80% masonry, is that right?
60.
Yes, 60?
And in this, in this, okay.
What's the difference between this and the guy that wanted the pawn shop that we required 80%? They're like two blocks away.
Well, I mean, you've got the, you've got C2, well, you've got C1, C2, and then you've also got, the problem with the pawn shop, which is right back here, is that's in the Old Town, that's in the not Old Town District. CBD, which is the Central District, it's an overlay district, which requires 100% masonry on the front, and then that, I mean, it requires 100% masonry. So what you end up with is not just the particular zoning class, but also the overlay district. So, with it being in the CBD, the pawn shop falls under that 100%, where riding strip can even be, you know, still, since we don't have an overlay, now Van Alstine Parkway, it can still be two-family duplex, it can be those apartments, it can be a single-family being, a number of things. But in the Old Town District, which is outside the CBD, nothing's required. So where this masonry requirement's coming under scrutiny is under the C1, and not the overlay. Does that sound correct, Julie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, it's, I understand the confusion. But the two issues here are, the first thing, the first assumption was, when the permit came in, is that they were renovating the current structure that they're in, where the apartment is right there on Van Alstine Parkway in Old Town. And that wasn't the case. And it was, that is C1, it was C1. But instead, they're actually building off, they were building on vacant lot, which is the nice new place that they're building. And so, without them looking into it, and us, without them asking our questions, and without us looking at it correctly, it was viewed as SF1. Or viewed as SF1, however, on the application to Veritas, it showed C1 because of the renovation assumption. So we've got kind of a mix-up here. Really, I mean, it's not Ty's fault. I mean, Ty has over field inspections, he's not over plan reviewing. He's here to be a nice guy and take some lumps, but it's not about that. It's not about taking lumps. It's about kind of understanding where we are in this whole process. And it was missed initially. It was caught, so we've got two corrections. One is to take it from SF1, which that lot was, to C1, and that'll happen a little bit later. But what's being asked for right now, which is a little premature, but it will all fall in line, once it's all done correctly, and we shall listen to it. And this is where, you know, the C1 needs to happen. Where you have some leeway as council is to either grant the variance as it is right now, as it looks, or it needs to fall in at 60%. You'd like to take the party plank off, knock the top ledge off, and go up at least 60% on the masonry. But that is a good question about the pawn shop. Yeah. So, Ty's not really involved, but he wants to act like it. The main thing is just trying to articulate, you know, not just from where we were coming from, but also, you know, our inspection, and see where they're coming from, and where we should.
My question is, if you use the answer.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to go?
Make a motion that we approve the request. It's written.
All in favor? To the variance, to the 60%?
Thank you, Ty.
And so, good. Those are the only items for our zoning board adjustment. The time is now 6:49. And we're going to adjourn zoning board adjustment. We want the city council to change. And are there any citizens' communications?
No.
Oh, well, again, I should call it to order at 6:49. And the first items are public hearing. And so, item number three, if there are no citizens' communications, we'll move on to item three. That is, conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property described as Hines West Side Edition, Section 3, replat Block 2, Block 1, Block 3, acres 1.512, and more commonly known as 151 Henry Hines Expressway, to grant a specific use permit to allow a pole sign under the C2 Commercial District General zoning classification. Pole sign requires a specific use permit. Are there any presentations?
Actually, we have one pole sign, or maybe something, it's right down here, and that was true. But unfortunately, that fell into livestock discipline. So, now we have to move the pole sign to within our site location. And it's going to be the same, the one that was true before. It's going to be 75th floor, 75th floor. And as we agreed in the, in this meeting, that it's going to be operated only during the business hours, which is shut down. I don't have to give a mind, telling that in the night. So, as soon as our business gets shut down, we will shut down the pole sign.
Is everyone going to put the location of the sign?
Yes.
So, okay. Any other discussions that, is that pretty much all the meeting details?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Second call for any more comments or questions. And so, third and final call for any comments or questions. Seeing none, we move on to item number four. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property described as Divisions Van Alstine, Block 3, 75 by 300 feet of SB 8, more commonly known as 293 Van Alstine Parkway, West Van Alstine Parkway, and change the current zoning of SF1, Single Family Residential 1, to C1, Commercial District, or Office Light Detail and Neighborhood Services. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion regarding this? This is what we were talking about earlier. Second call for any questions or comments. Third, and a last call for any questions or comments. Seeing no hands, we move on to item number, item number five. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property described as Divisions Van Alstine, Block 3, 75 by 300 feet of SB 1 and 2, 50 by 155, located at the southwest corner of Nunnally Avenue and St. Nick Drive, to change the current zoning of SF1, Single Family Residential District 1, to TF, Two Family Residential or Duplex, to grant a C District. Are there any comments or questions regarding this item? Second call for any questions or comments regarding item five. And a third and final call. Seeing no hands, we move on to item number six. Conduct a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property described as Divisions Van Alstine, Block 2, 75 by 155 of SB 1, more commonly known as 372 Nunnally Avenue, to change the current zoning of SF1, Single Family Residential District 1, to TF, Two Family Residential Duplex District. Are there any comments or questions about this? This is another decent property nearby. Second call for any questions or comments. And a third and final call for questions. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the consent agenda, correct? Consent agenda. And I will just read all the things, items, consent agenda, some of the recent, these can all be voted on at once. Or if anyone on the council wants to take an item off, and say, you know, if they agree, there's no discussion, you can do that. But item seven is, add a consent agenda. Approval of minutes from October 13 regular meeting, October 13, 2015 regular meeting, zoning board adjustment meetings. I'm going to read that again, Mr. President. Approval of meetings from October 13, 2015 regular meeting, and October 13, 2015 zoning board adjustment. Item eight is, consider and take any action necessary regarding appointment of Wayne Molemak to the Planning and Zoning Commission Place 3. Item number nine is, consider and take any action necessary regarding appointment of Wayne Molemak to the Van Alstine Community Development Corporation and Board of Directors. Item number 10 is, consider and take any action necessary regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement for the sale of 15,608,600 gallons of minimum take or pay water capacity, in the amount of $20,837.48 to the city of Melissa. Number 10, on the consent agenda, consider and take any action necessary regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement for the sale of 12,260,850 gallons of minimum take or pay water capacity, in the amount of $16,368.26 to the city of Melissa. Item number 11 is, consider and take any action necessary regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement for the sale of 3,347,750 gallons of minimum take or pay water capacity, in the amount of $4,469.25 to the city of Annan. And item number 12 on the consent agenda, and the final item, consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing advertisement and solicitation bids for the South Dallas Avenue Water Line Project. So, any items needed?
I have a question about one of the items.
All right. Which one we should pull it off the consent agenda?
Yeah, you should pull it off, and just say, which item, pull it off, then approve the rest of the consent in one motion, and then go back to the whole item.
Wayne Molemak for planning and zoning commission.
Oh, why? So, we're going to move item number eight, the item regarding the appointment of Wayne Molemak to Planning and Zoning Commission Place 3. We're going to move that to the regular agenda. And so, as for the other five items, I mean, I have a motion regarding this. I make a motion to approve. Second. Okay, just one more second. All in favor? It is unanimous, and so the remaining five items pass. And that's the end of the consent agenda. Now we can move on to the regular agenda. And first, I guess we should take up any questions or comments from the council regarding the appointment of Wayne Molemak to the Planning and Zoning Commission Place 3.
My only question was, I didn't, by the address, I didn't, couldn't tell whether he lived in the city limits or not.
Outside, outside incorporated area of the city limits.
Is it a requirement on the planning and zoning board, you have to live inside the city limits?
You have to live in, inside the city limits, or in the city's ETJ?
That must have changed then. I know when her ring was pointed on there, they were jacking around which board to be on, if you want to be on the park board. But they said that they needed somebody that had, that lived inside the city limits to be on them. So at that time, it was handled differently. Okay. That's all I have.
I have one more question for I. If there are no further questions, then I have a motion regarding the appointment.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor? It is unanimous?
That went too hard, right?
Moving on to item 13. Consider and take any action regarding, any action necessary regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property described as Hines West Side Edition, Section 3, replat Block 2, Block 1, Block 3, acres 1.512, and more commonly known as 151 Henry Hines Expressway, to grant a specific use permit to allow a pole sign under the C2 Commercial District dash General zoning classification. The pole sign requires a specific use permit. Any questions or comments?
I heard there was some discussion at the planning and zoning meeting, I believe it was, about the light, and the light being turned off at night, and stuff like that, on timer, or, I don't know exactly how that was all made.
Yes, sir. You're saying it turn off as soon as, as soon as business hours is.
It'll be on common.
Turned off as soon as business goes off in Chicago.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion to approve.
Do you want that requirement to be added to the SUP ordinance?
Yeah, I think that'd be right. They're okay, that's okay with you guys, right?
Okay.
So you're part of the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. And so, the motion is to approve the specific use permit with, how did you phrase that?
Light switch to turn it off at off hours.
Okay. And the owner/agent has agreed to that. So, we have that motion in? Yes. And all in favor? It is unanimous? Item number 14. Consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner/agent of the property described as Divisions Van Alstine, Block 3, 75 by 300 feet of SB 8, more commonly known as 293 West Van Alstine Parkway, to change the current zoning of SF1, Single Family Residential District 1, to C1, Commercial District dash Office Light Detail and Neighborhood Services. Any questions or comments from the council? And we have a motion? Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably down question. Good. What if we didn't approve? I'm thinking logistically about somebody's building, building there, that's planned for commercial. If this was a council that said, I want that to stay residential, I mean, what would happen? They couldn't use it as commercial? They couldn't use it as commercial property, right?
It would be a permit issued in error, and that's just an unfortunate consequence that the owner would have to live with. If it's not granted, the city is allowed to correct the permits without liability.
I was just asking the question, just because of the sequence of how this came up, I'm thinking about how it could play out in a different...
No, it's a good question, and people have litigated over those sorts of things, and, you know, whether you think it's fair or not fair, if the city issues a permit like that in error, if the city is allowed to still go back and properly enforce what should have been issued.
Any other questions? We have a motion regarding the changes on... Motion in a second. Just two more seconds, all in favor? It is unanimous, so the zoning will be changed. Item number fifteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner or agent of the property described as divisions Van Alstine Lot S D one and two, fifty by one hundred fifty-five, located at the southwest corner of Nunnally Avenue and Stennett Drive, to change the current zoning of S F one, single-family residential district one, to T F, two-family residential duplex district. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do a couple. One, one understand it's been the, I'm guessing that the front of the property would face him if they built a duplex.
Yes, sir.
I would think you could build twenty-five foot wide and long, or fifty foot long, but it'd be quite the...
Yes, sir.
If that's true, is Stennett, that goes on through and comes on the back of the nursing home, is that a valid street that we maintain?
It is. As a matter of fact, the nursing director came by just the other day, and we talked about the damage that's been, that's occurred to the roadway because of where their dumpster and their pad is located and what the trash trucks are currently doing. And we had some discussion about responsibility and getting that repaired, and, because currently it's not a highly traveled road.
But it is a city...
But it is, it is a city thoroughfare. City maintained thoroughfare.
Any other questions? May I have a motion regarding this, this change?
Make a motion that we change the zoning to two-family residential duplex district.
Second. All in favor? It is unanimous, and so the zoning will be changed to two-family residential duplex district. Item number six, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner or agent of the property described as divisions Van Alstine Block Two, Block Seventy-five by one fifty-five of S D one, more commonly known as three seventy-two, Nunnally Avenue, to change the current zoning of S F one, single-family residential district one, to T F, two-family residential duplex district. Any questions or comments regarding this item?
I think I'll make a comment here, I could have made it on the last one, I didn't think about it, but I went over and just looked around the whole neighborhood, and there were quite a few duplexes in this area or other parts of the city that wouldn't be appropriate. I feel like it's very close in these areas. I just want to say that.
There are, it's kind of a mix of houses. Some are, are homes that were prepared, some not so good. There's one mobile home over there.
It's a very mixed neighborhood, I guess. I think this will enhance the...
May I have a motion regarding this change? Just two seconds, all in favor? It is unanimous, and so the zoning will be changed to T F, two-family residential. And we're going to, we're going to bypass items seventeen and eighteen at this time. We're going to move on to item number nineteen. Is it nineteen?
Yes, sir.
Consider and take any action necessary regarding the nominating person who represents General Law Cities to serve in Greater Texas Online Utility Authority Board to serve on them. Any questions or comments about...
Mayor Council, I spoke to Drew Satterwhite, the managing director of G T U A today, that you have two applications, Jeanne Anderson, or two nominations, Jeanne Anderson and Gunnar also nominated another person, and he's wanting to give us that resume. The council's come up with somebody to nominate, this is your time to do so. At the December meeting is when council will vote on all the nominations that have been suggested from all the counties. So if y'all have anybody in mind to nominate for the G T U A Board, this is your opportunity.
So if I may reiterate, I have two resumes.
Okay, so you do have a second, okay, second resume. Those are the two people?
That's right.
You do have a second resume, second resume from Gunnar as well. So, both of those, if you don't have anybody to nominate, then just take no action. If y'all do have somebody to nominate to push forward to G T U A Board, then I'll be happy to notify Drew, otherwise these two people will still be on the ballot next month.
Does anyone nominate? So this, this just goes, we're taking no further action tonight. And so we can...
So what you want to do now is, depending on how long you leave, this is what I can say to the committee, you probably don't want to go into committee for twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then maybe seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, and then go into the executive session, and then adjourn twenty-five.
So...
You'll have to come out and take, council will have to come out and take action. This means you took action, we're within thirty dot of any time frame, council will need to take action on these...
And so the last, the last thing we're going to do...
Unless, unless council, unless you really take action, so... But I believe there needs to be some discussion.
So we save that for executive session. Well then, we're ready for departmental reports.
Jennifer, you have anything?
Just that I, along with the Public Works Department, will be giving a presentation to fourth grade, they're going to be coming around, getting ready for their Thanksgiving feast this coming Tuesday on the seventeenth, so they'll be visiting, I believe, the library and police department. We're going to take them inside the water tower and do a presentation there, and they'll go to the museum and other businesses around town. So if any of you, I'm not really sure what time they're going to come, but if anyone would like to attend and be a part of that, we'd be happy to have you.
Chief?
Mayor Council, I'm not sure any of y'all were able to attend the game, October thirtieth, but I just want to bring attention that the seniors did present us with a ball. Other than that, the weather was terrible, we got it through, so I was pretty proud of that. We're going to be putting this into the lobby, and probably many of y'all see it, they've got their helmets now with the Den Blue line, the black helmet, so that they're going to continue wearing that to hopefully all the playoffs.
Lieutenant?
I'd just like to mention that we had the honor last month of visiting the elementary school for Fire Safety League and some of the daycares here in town, so it's always a joy for us to get to visit kids and kind of intermingle and show them the fire engines. Also, we're moving forward with the construction next door, it's moving along quickly, and we're ready to get back, but it's, it's going really well. And then lastly, we are, we're still working with both the Forestry Service and FEMA on both the brands that we've been awarded, so we're making progress, and we should have those wrapped up here in the next, one of them here in the next month, and the other in the next six months.
Steve?
Little report on Will Five, we got a new pump in, main factory still looking at the motor itself. Tried to get a back tea on it, couldn't get a back tea twice, so they had liquid chlorine down there today. We'll flush it probably tomorrow afternoon, about eight to nine, and try to pull a back tea the next morning. On the Coursemore Bridge, it was completed by Bassin, I want to thank Bassin and the park board and C D C for the repair of the bridge. It is completely left now. I just happened to be down at County Line Road this morning, I was happening, it's D G and E, D G and E?
D G and O.
D G and O.
Yes, sir.
Railroad is preparing to tear out that railroad crossing, I've been receiving notification, I don't think anybody else received an notification. They're going to repair the crossing there, they have bent road, but just to let everybody know that that road will be closed. Should be just in one day though. Just last week, I met with FEMA, took our case on corporate damages to FEMA, we're waiting to hear response on that. So we, I'll send that back over to get back to the council.
June?
Let's see, the month of October, the thirty-sixth, we prepared a sign up. We hosted a special story time in conjunction with the Dennisville Police Department, based on our officer Brandon Greer, who came to read a Halloween story as well as to give tips to the parents and children about, say, trick or treating. K-ten News surprises him, showed up, so there's a little blurb on their website that they kind of looked at, it's a nice story that they did. Reminder that Friends of Library, their Christmas fundraiser for the library, and the home tour of the historic Stennett Home, which is absolutely beautiful, and having seen it decorated for Christmas, it is really exciting to see. So the gift-a-chance sale at the library, reminder of that. Friends of Library also successfully wrapped the Philip, the fall wall for two hundred dollars. And also, in the month of October, Young Adult Specialist Jordan S. Carriant and two members of our team council traveled to the Christ Center of Sherman, they worked with big crowd of children, sixteen kids, provided milk, cookies, and a story and book.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Council, see, we had a pre-construction meeting in Stone Hall of Homes last week for the south end of Georgetown. They're, as soon as things start drying up, they're going to start moving dirt around. They'll start, they have an easement on Kelly Lane, where they'll be building, they're going to be looking for permission to build model homes right there on Kelly, and that'll be the first, that'll be the gateway to the first phase, which is approximately sixty-five, seventy homes.
Ninety?
Ninety homes. And so that, that took place this last week, very productive. I think we got all the questions answered on the front end of that project. O'Reilly's was set to open Saturday, however, they ran into hiccups as far as finalizing their alarm test, their sprinkler system final, so as soon as they get done with the fire marshal requirements, hopefully they'll be open. All stickers are on the windows, looks like everything's in place, they just need to get those last few life safety items taken care of before they can, they can gain permission to, to open. Other than that, T. Van Alstine Beautiful was on Good Morning Texas, scarecrow display or what was it?
They came to see the scarecrows.
There you go. So very nice, very nice, well, putting, putting Van Alstine in a, in a great light and putting this on display for, for the E F M area, so good job, take that. I assume any questions, I think that's about it.
Okay. Comments from the council?
Yes, I'd like to thank our fire department and Brian for one of the toughest jobs I did a little over a week ago. I know some of the guys are struggling, but we're thinking about you guys, we're praying for you guys, and more than anything, we just appreciate what y'all do, because even though you get paid to do a job, doesn't make it any easier, so we appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Say that, that must have been an awful scene, and our first responders, not just fire, but police too, and, and other agencies from all, from, from this vicinity. We have many agencies responding to the fire and to the later investigation, and everyone's very professional. I don't imagine that everybody at least has seen a scene like that. Not only that, but the response by this entire city, to try to help this family, was extraordinary. The response is still continued, we're still trying to help that, and I think Van Alstine is an exceptional city.
I'd like to echo, echo the Simmons Center to both fire and police department, also one, Kate, I think you mentioned that Saturday is quite hot inside, over there in the city yard. Anybody has anything to dispose of there? That's a worthwhile project, some of the...
I echo all the sentiments, I just want to say that I think this is an amazing city. Just watching the response and going to the prayer, the meeting at the Memphis Church, that a city pulls together like this, it is rare and wonderful, and I'm so thankful to be a part of it, and I'm happy to say that. Thank you.
And so now we are, we're going to retire from our, well, we're going to retire from our regular session and go into executive session. In accordance with Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code, open news law, the city council may or may not close, they take a new session pursuant to applicable laws. Items for consideration, one is to resession the closed session pursuant to Chapter five five one dot zero seven one, one in parentheses, comma, Texas Government Code for consultation and attorney regarding a former employee. Now, also, we are going to consider a request for a plat by the Palladium Edition, Senior Housing Center, and also a site plan, something by, all of those are going to be, those are both going to be discussed in the executive session also. Is there any, which section should I cite?
That would be five five one point oh seven one two.
Okay, all right, and I guess that's on, that's, that's on record now, so...
Yes, we just need to state the time.
And then so, we're going to adjourn this session and go into executive session, and there may be some action afterward, but I don't know if anyone wants to sit around.
Mayor, we need to announce the time.
Oh, and the time is seven twenty. Thanks, everyone.